Welcome, everybody, to the 2024 Annual Town Meeting for the Town of Yarmouth. For the first time in 32 years, I am not Nat Tupper. But he is incognito in the back with the fedora and mustache and funny glasses. So he is here and present, and we're happy to have him here. While I'm on the subject, and I do think it's probably an opportunity for me, since he can't fire me anymore, to maybe embarrass him one last time. Nat has dedicated decades of his life caring for and being a steward for the town of Yarmouth, and has earned a well-deserved retirement. And so while he is here and I can embarrass him, let's do that. If everybody can just kind of recognize his time. Stand up, Nat. I just had to. Thanks for that, everybody. Prior to getting started, a little bit of housekeeping. We are here to celebrate and to also do some business. Before we get into the Warren articles, we will be recognizing -- echo, echo. We'll be recognizing outgoing school committee members, and we will be sort of thanking town council, school committee members and staff for their work. We'll also be recognizing this year's Lat String Award winner, which is our annual Resident of the Year Award, which is a very special time. It looks like we have a great crowd for that as well. So before we do get started, I think it's great. I've seen several prior Lat String Award winners here present. If you wouldn't mind standing up so we could recognize you, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for the work that you do for the community. In just a moment, I'm going to pass the microphone on to Lisa Grant, who's our town clerk, to call for nominations for a town meeting moderator. The moderator is going to be running our business side of the meeting, and will be keeping us all in line. I think there might have been some colluding happening, because after three or so decades of faithful work as our town meeting moderator, Horace Horton has decided to pass the gavel on to the next generation of great stewards of this community. I will reiterate that this is a sort of totally up to you on who to nominate for the moderator position, but we do have a willing candidate in Jay Jones, who happens to be up at the table already and I think is excited to be here, and we're excited to have him here. Again, because we expect this to be a kind of a predictable vote, we will get started. So I will welcome Lisa up, and we can open for nominations. We will vote. And again, because it's predictable, we'll start with a vote up at the head table here, and if we need to extend it beyond to the audience, we can do that. If there are other nominations for a town meeting moderator, we'll take that at this time as well. But we should be moving that forward, and we'll swear them into that duty. So thanks again for being here. It's great to see a pretty good turnout for us, and we'll get to the business at hand. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. I would like to open the meeting up by asking for nominations for a moderator.
I would like to nominate Spencer J. Jones.
Second? Perfect. I would like to ask anyone wishing to cast a ballot for the moderator to do so now.
Any other nominations?
Oh, any other nominations? By unanimous vote, Spencer Jones will be the moderator for this evening.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to the 2024 Yarmouth Town Meeting. Oh, you got to swear me in first?
Yes, I can swear and you in.
All right.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Spencer Jones, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as you shall continue a citizen thereof, so help you God? Do you swear that you will discharge to the best of your abilities the duties incumbent upon you as moderator of this meeting according to the Constitution and laws of the state, so help you God?
I do.
All right, if you could sign right there.
All right. Well, welcome, everybody, to the 2024 edition of the town meeting. I want to thank all of you for coming tonight and congratulate you on being here. The Town of Yarmouth was incorporated in 1849, and for almost every year since then, there has been an annual town meeting. That's over 170 town meetings. There were a couple times during World War II where there wasn't, but other than that, this is an unbroken streak. And your participation is really what is important and makes this town what it is. So thank you very much for coming. There are other people in the town that do more than just come to the annual meeting. There are people who put time and effort into supporting the town and serving the town, and I would like to thank a few of them, starting with the outgoing school committee members. So, Mr. Auger, do you have some remarks you'd like to make?
I do. Good evening, folks, and thank you all for coming. It was my very good fortune to have my two terms on school committee coincide with Kate Barker Shub's two terms. And it's a real honor to tell you a little bit tonight about what she meant to our school committee for the last six years. I'm going to go off script briefly, and I know Andrew is getting nervous as I say that. You know, we, in America, cast off royalty and kings and queens hundreds of years ago. We're not fond of princes and princesses. But if there was such a thing as royalty in the Yarmouth school system, Catherine Barker Shub is our reigning monarch, I think. The daughter of two educators, a teacher and someone who was a paradigm in the school superintendent world, a star athlete and academic star at Yarmouth High School back in the day when moving effortlessly between those two groups was not as easy as our kids in Yarmouth do these days. The winner of the Boyd Award. She went off and conquered the world in Massachusetts and North Carolina, met her husband in Bangor, and it was our good fortune that she and Adam moved back to Yarmouth to raise their two sons, George and Henry. And I would just note for the record that George and Henry sound kind of like royal names, too, if you think about it. No description of Kate's time on our school committee would be complete without at least just one mention of how much she loves the kiddos. If we had, I think, a nickel for every time she said that in the course of a meeting, we would all be able to quit our day jobs. But I don't make light of that, because I think that expression encapsulates just how positive Kate was, what a positive force she was for the school committee over the last six years, and much of which she was in a leadership role as a vice chair or chair. You know, usually in school committee discussions, the budget is really the real issue. And for the last five years or so, the budget has really been an afterthought, given all the other things that our school committee worked on and was faced with. And I just, in driving back from work, I was thinking about that, building a new school or renovating three new schools, trying to figure out how we were going to manage hybrid, trying to get kids back into school, dealing with masks and social distancing, dealing with the social disruption of the murder of George Floyd, and the necessary -- it was long overdue, but a disruption nonetheless, and the new creation of a new mission committee. All the work that we did trying to get kids out of masks so our athletes could perform and playmakers could perform, and our young students could learn and see lips moving. The discussions we had over difficult or over-exuberant student behavior at some of our athletic events, the work we did crafting a transgender policy, which at once is meant to affirm the very loving and accepting environment at our schools, and at the same time trying to honor and respect the rights of parents. All the work we did around what is a public record and discussions about emails, and on and on and on. And I'm sure there were many in the community during that time, and some on the school committee, who went away from those discussions pretty frustrated. And I count myself in that group from time to time. But the underlying constant in all of that was Kate Barker Shub's positive approach to what we were doing, her unfailing positive energy, her interest in trying to come to good solutions. Now, you could be forgiven if that was all you were focused on, because she is so positive. Although her husband, who was nice enough to walk in as I'm talking, has assured me that she's not always that positive all the time, and he gave me approval to say that. But there's so many other things that Kate brought to the school committee over the last six years. She was always prepared. She always did her work. She knew what was on the agenda. She ran a darn good meeting. And one of the other things I think was particularly significant, especially in our increasingly tribalized political discussion, whether that's -- you know, it's probably more of a national thing, less of a local thing, but it happens, and we try to -- or people tend to put people into groups and categorize them and silo them based on what group you're with and the like. And Kate never -- I never saw Kate do that, never heard her do it, and there was a reason that time and time again, people from within the community would come to her with an idea or come to her with a concern or a thought, because they knew it wasn't going to get short shrift or be dismissed or ignored or set aside, that she would listen to you, even if she disagreed. And I know I took advantage of that several times, and it made the ideas and the thoughts that I brought to the council that much better because of her involvement and because of the energy and what she brought to those discussions. So Kate, I know this chair really isn't a throne or anything royal that would befit you, but it is sturdy and it is dependable, and that's what you were for the last six years.
I appreciate you. Thank you all so much. Sorry. Shorter than Noel. I have a few very quick thank-yous, and then it's my turn to get Noel back a little bit. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. I am so honored and proud to be the Yarmouth native up on this stage. I love this community and these schools, and it was the honor of a lifetime to serve in this role. Thank you to the entire school committee. A special thank you to our current chairperson, David Ray, for your dedication to the community. Thank you for your support and your friendship. Thank you to Andrew Dolof, the best superintendent, in my opinion, in the entire state of Maine. I am positive that I frustrated him many times over the course of the past six years. I ask countless questions all day long to Andrew Dolof, but he is a good man who cares deeply about the students of Yarmouth and his educators, and we're very fortunate to have him here. I had the best experience as a student going through the Yarmouth School Department, and now my boys are, too. Thank you to our incredible educators here. You are the best, and I look forward to finding new ways to support you going forward. My two favorite educators are my parents. My mom, Joanne Barker, taught 4th grade in Yarmouth for more than 25 years. My dad, Ron Barker, who's with my older son at a baseball game right now so that I could be here and my husband could be here. He was a coach and teacher and principal and superintendent here for a time as well. They would be the first phone call that I would make after a tough meeting. They are my support system, they are my everything, and I love you very much, Mom. I will note that both of my parents have also earned a chair, so it's only my older sister who hasn't gotten one yet. She lives in Scarborough, and she couldn't be here tonight, so we can make fun of her a little bit. And finally, to my husband, Adam, and my two boys, Henry and George, they just walked in off the Little League field tonight. My kids were in preschool and 2nd grade when I was elected, and now they're headed for the middle school and headed for the high school. All three of them were so supportive of me taking school committee on, never a complaint from Adam when there was bowls of cereal for dinner, or missing bedtime when the boys were younger, or missing sporting events, and now. I love them and appreciate them more than they will ever know. So thank you all for your time tonight. Go Clippers. So now I get to transition to Noel, which will be a lot of fun. I'm honored tonight to speak about my colleague, Noel Auger. Noel, congratulations on six years of dedicated service to our community and our schools. I didn't know Noel very well before our time on school committee. In fact, though, I do remember the very first time that he and I met. It was at the Yarmouth Clam Festival, maybe close to a decade ago now. In a previous lifetime, I was actually a TV news reporter, and I was covering the clam festival in my hometown of Yarmouth. It was a fun and busy day at work. Now, sometimes, sort of when you're out and about as a TV news reporter, people will approach you in interesting ways. This one was a little different. It was a man dressed as a tree who walked up to me to be interviewed. Now, it wasn't just any tree, it was a tree named Will B. Green. Will B. is a large tree, and he happens to be the Yarmouth recycling mascot. Who knew? Turns out, Will B. was actually a man named Noel Auger underneath that costume. Noel, that was our first meeting, but I learned quickly, you are not trash, you are a treasure. And I've been fortunate to work alongside you for six years. I could always count on Noel to bring the best snacks to every meeting, and if I arrived at 6:58, I could always count on Noel to come in just a little bit later than me, which made me feel better. But I could also count on Noel to be honest and to stand up for what he believed was right. He served as our finance chair and led many of our contract negotiations along the way. Noel and I also disagreed on several things along the way, too. Our votes sometimes went in different directions on different things. We didn't always agree, and that is the beauty of this school board, the way that we all believe that politics should be. Noel and I didn't see eye to eye on every issue over the course of six years, but I leave here tonight counting Noel as such a very good friend of mine, and I'm grateful for that. Noel is a successful attorney, don't hold that against him. He's also an excellent tennis player, a community volunteer, but no doubt, his greatest accomplishment is his family, his beautiful and brilliant wife, Heather, and their three superstar kiddos. Alex just graduated from Johns Hopkins, Sutter is a student at Northwestern University, and Chris will be a senior at Yarmouth High School next year. Noel, now you don't have to miss any of Chris's basketball games next winter for school committee, and you've earned that. Congratulations and thank you.
I would just echo all the thank-yous that Kate issued, but I want to say them again anyway. Andrew, thank you for all your great work, and your entire administrative staff, whom I see here, Zach, and Jody, and Shawna, and Rudy's not here, and Bruce, and Kyle, or Blake, I'm sorry, and that great administrative team that you put together that makes these schools so great, all the great teachers, Councilor Casey, I think I saw Todd Abbott walk in, and all the fantastic teachers, which ultimately, to me, that's education is the teacher in the classroom. And I know that because my mom was a teacher in the Portland school systems for 20 years. She was a building rep, actually, Portland High for a time. And all of the ed techs and all the cafeteria folks and all the support people who make these schools such a special place. And finally, I would thank all of you and every single person who ever sent an email to the council over the course of the six years I was there. I read every single one. I tried to get back to every single one. I know I missed a few along the way. But I really appreciated that exchange. It informed my opinions through having that dialogue. A lot of people who I had those conversations with, I still don't think I've ever met, but I have still kept them as email correspondence. Continue to do that. I guess that's the only thing I would leave you with. Have those discussions, you know, continue to speak out or post or send an op-ed. Life is short. We've, you know, if you have something to say, don't be bullied, don't be intimidated to say it. Say it respectfully, say it thoughtfully, but make sure you say it, because chances are, if it's something you believe in, then there's going to be others who probably feel and would say the same thing. Lastly, I just want to thank all of the chairs that I served under, I guess, or with, I should say. David Ray, I'll miss your measured leadership and your thoughtfulness. Kate, as I've mentioned, and Ann Fleming as well. So thank you all very much. You stay up here. We'll be back.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Award of the Lat String Award, and this will be done this year by Mr. Bob Swan. So if you would come up.
Hello. Good evening. I think I see a lot of familiar faces and a lot of familiar mouths here, so it's nice to be here. It's been done before, and I know my wife will cringe, but I tend to go off script. I have a lovely -- she's crying now. How I got here, I can thank my friend Scott. A month or so ago, called and told me who the recipient was and wondered if I could get that person to the town council meeting. And I said, well, Scott, how do I do that? We never go to town council meetings. He said, well, you're a dentist. Lie to them. And I did. So, and that went off well, and thanks to Donna helping with that lie, by the way. Since 1980, the town has annually awarded the Lat String to a resident who has shown steadfast commitment to the Town of Yarmouth and who best exemplifies our community motto of "Our lat string is always out." It's intended to acknowledge the residents whose leadership and community participation is representative of Yarmouth's strong sense of place. Past recipients include an impressive list of community stewards, some of who are here tonight, and leaders who have served the town and its residents with distinction. Tonight, we'll add yet another name to that list, and that's Larry Forsier. Larry Forsier, who is a dear, dear friend, exemplifies the qualities needed to receive this recognition through his ongoing service to the people and the community of Yarmouth. His active participation in the Yarmouth Senior Housing as a director is noted. Since 2005, 20 years, he encouraged the Yarmouth Lions Club to start the Adopt a Family program, which supports low-income families and individuals during the holiday season so that no child goes without a holiday. Larry works directly with Yarmouth, cares about our neighbors, YCANN, to identify those most in need. And through his work, hundreds of families and a lot of kids have benefited from his goodwill and generosity. And in the last number of years, that extended to nursing homes, where people also are sometimes forgotten, not in this town. Larry is the driving force to institute the Yarmouth Club's Rees for Fuels program, wherein the proceeds from each reese sold at Christmas time is donated to the Community Fuel Assistance Program. Since its creation, this program has contributed over $17,500 to the Fuel Assistance Fund. Larry has volunteered literally thousands of hours over two decades to the Yarmouth Clam Festival and its successful operation. He brings his business acumen and his just common sense to the food services to really make the programs run well, not just for the Lions Club, for many other nonprofit organizations. He has literally spent countless hours for the betterment of our community and very much deserves this award. Please join me in congratulating Larry Forsier as Yarmouth's 2024 Lat String Award winner.
Thank you, Dr. Swan. First, I'd like to thank the town council and the town manager for their consideration and their vote. I'd also like to congratulate and thank our committees, school and town committees, for what they do. Thank you for your good work. When I learned of receiving the award, I just needed to look back to see Next item on the agenda. -- the list of past recipients. What an impressive list of accomplished people, pillars of this very special community. I'm honored to be on that list. This year by Mr. Bob Swan. Even though the award is given in my name, I accept it knowing it is to be shared by many others in the community. I might have been the catalyst and led some programs, but these programs would not have succeeded without the dedicated support of many people in the Lions Club, the Town of Yarmouth, and so many generous folks in the community. I thank you all. In 1974, my wife and I moved to Yarmouth and built a home. What attracted us to Yarmouth was this lovely village, the unique harbor and islands, great parks and friendly people, and of course, a wonderful school system. We made lifelong friends here and always have been grateful to live in such a friendly and giving community. Working in industry and frequent travel was not conducive to committing to club activities. However, after retiring in 2002, I was recruited to the Lions Club and was immediately taken by the creative, generous, and dedicated members of this club. I was so impressed with the -- I was also impressed with the harmonious relationship the club had with the town. The town motto is "Lat String Always Out." The Lions motto is "We Serve." That's kind of a good combination. I'd like now to speak directly about some of the programs that Bob mentioned. The Project Holiday Adopt a Family, as we call, was initially a Lions Club program. However, it's been administered by YCANN for many years. Their F- Their efforts to solicit sponsors and also Yarmouth Community Services vetting process for recipient families has been key to the program's success. For the past two years, over 40 families and 100 children were able to enjoy very generous gifts and gift cards, given the dedicated support of these groups and the generosity of the community. Project Holiday Adopt a Family is by far the most improved of all our programs. Looking back at the history on this, in earlier days, our process was chaotic at times. Trying to have winter coats available for families to shop, then food boxes and family gifts delivered to cars behind the First Parish Church was a challenge, especially during inclement weather. Thanks to Yarmouth Community Services and YCANN, all delivery of gifts and cards to recipient families are done by appointment at the Yarmouth Community House, and it all happens in a couple of hours. They use, the recipients used to line up at the First Parish Church, sometimes for an hour, and anyway, it was, it was a tough gig. Meanwhile, we're serving a record number of families. It's been fun and rewarding to be on this team. Much of the funding of the program comes from cash and gift cards, donations from the community. Every year, letters go out to local businesses that we are soliciting donations for our adopt program. I always follow up with a visit, and the response has been great. I'd like to give you an outstanding example. This is just one, and there are many, many. For the past two years, the owner of a local restaurant has donated a $70 certificate for every family that we, that we are gifting. Last year, it was over $3,000. He said that when he was growing up, his family didn't have much, and a dinner out was a big deal. He hoped that these families would enjoy the ability to have a special holiday meal, just like they did. The Adopt a Nursing, Nursing Home Resident Program has been successful, given the cooperation of Brentwood and Coastal Manor. This, this, I believe, has been going on for 18 or 20 years. They, they identify deserving residents at the nursing home and also they, they identify the residents and have done a very good job in, in talking about needs and wants in terms of, of what, what they, what we might be gifting. Typically, each year, we adopt around about 10 residents from each of the facilities. My favorite has been both at Coastal Manor and at Brentwood. I was able to gift and visit gentlemen from each of these homes for over a five-year period. What a gratifying experience that is. The program itself, especially at Brentwood, and we have stories at Coastal Manor as well, but I'm going to, I'm going to choose Brentwood in this particular case, has been a unique, in unique, that it's enabled us to develop relationships with residents and staff. So this is kind of an outcropping of, of this. For instance, one of our members here, Mike Murray, and his daughter, daughters, okay, they serenade residents at Brentwood on a, on a regular basis. And I hear from the staff that the staff and residents really enjoy their talented, their talented concerts. For several years, this is unusual, for several years, Brentwood had a prong, and it was a real prong. They had costumes, they had special foods, they had music, they had dancing, and they even had awards. We were privileged to assist with these events. The residents were really, really enjoying this. Just last, last month, my wife Donna and I were asked to host a glamour photo shoot, photographing about 30 residents. It was a fun and very moving experience. We left there, really moved. The photos were to be shared with family members. We shot it in black and white. It's very dramatic. It's a lot of fun, a lot of fun. Also, one of our talented members who's here tonight is now giving art classes for residents at Brentwood. I'm sure there are dozens of other examples. I'm just talking about a few that, that have occurred that I'm aware of. Bob mentioned this before, but Yarmouth residents probably remember Nat Tupper's large donation thermometer on the village green as he kicked off the, the town's fuel, fuel fund. It was easy for us to see that this would go very well with the sale of Christmas trees that we were doing on the village square. This is, this has been going very well. The town's transfer station has been very supportive to us all these years, allowing us to sell rees at their shelter. Meanwhile, the members, the Lion members eagerly signed up to, to sell rees two or three weekends during the Christmas season. Just in the past two years, we've, we were able to donate $4,000 a year. I checked in with our, with our supplier, and it looks like we're good to go this year as well. I've been tasked, as Bob mentioned, I've been tasked, as many have, to co-chair our, our clam festival booth for the past several years. Most people in room have likely run a festival booth or worked shifts at one of the booths or more at the clam festival. Well, the Lions Club has been very ambitious in their participation of the festival. We now have a 48-foot booth, 140 shift hours, yeah, 140-hour shifts, four-hour shifts, very ambitious undertaking for a club our size. Thanks to the willingness of the, the members who volunteer, friends and family, we have been able to support so many local causes. All of the proceeds that we, that we have from that are donated locally. I'm pleased to mention that the Town, Town of Yarmouth has been the primary beneficiary of the festival's success of our booth. I worked in the semiconductor industry for 40 years, with about 30 years at Fairchild in South Portland. Every year, we had a United Way campaign, and employees would either make a donation or pledge, pledge a percentage of their salary. Many of us wondered where our donations were going. I actually chaired the, the campaign a couple of years, and that was, that was a concern that people had. This is not the case with these programs that we have. Each year, volunteers from, from the Town, Town and Lions Club deliver gifts and gift cards personally to family members. This is a quantum leap from not knowing where your money's going. You actually meet the people and give them the gifts. Lions that adopt residents at nursing homes get to deliver the gifts in person. People that buy rees know that the money is going directly to the fuel fund. 100% of the proceeds of the clam festival go to numerous local nonprofits and the town for specific needs. In summary, it's my hope that all Yarmouth Lions Club member, members, and there's a bunch of them here, the town staff, I saw some up here, individuals and businesses that have supported these programs can understand that this award is also about their dedication, support, and generosity. I thank you all.
Thank you very much, Larry. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, before we go into the warrants, I wanted to do a tiny bit of housekeeping. I wanted to let you know that these town meetings are governed by the rules set out in the main moderator's manual, the 2021 edition. If you do wish to speak when the moment comes for discussion about a warrant, you should go to one of the microphones in the back, and you should state your name, and you should wait to be recognized by the moderator. I also want to let you know that we will have voting done, and you should have a card in your hand. If you don't, our town clerk will perhaps help you acquire one. And finally, I'd like to let you know that we're going to try to go through them as fast as we can, giving everyone a chance to have discussion, but there are a great number of them. And we have asked to have some motions prepared to, coming from some of the town members up here, to speed the process along. Great. Article number two. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for regular instruction, the school committee and the town council recommend $17,929,247. Councilor Craig, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize $17,929,247 for regular instruction.
Thank you for that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. The floor is open for discussion. Seeing no discussion, I would like for all those in favor of Councilor Craig's motion to say, to hold up their card. All right? You can put them down now. All those opposed? Thank you very much. The ayes have it. Article three. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for special education, the school committee and the town council recommend $6,433,381. Councilor Bates, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that the town vote to authorize $6,433,381 for special education.
Thank you, Councilor Bates. Is there a second?
Second.
Wonderful. The floor is now open for discussion on Councilor Bates's motion. Seeing no discussion, would all those in favor of the motion please raise your card up? Thank you. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Article four. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for career and technical education, the school committee and the town council recommend $0. Council Orinstein, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to authorize $0 for career and technical education.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. The floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, I just want to explain to folks that the school department continues to invest a lot of time and energy in career and technical education. It's just that now that is funded directly to the CTE schools by the state. It used to be a flow-through. The money would come to us, and then we would then pay the CTE schools to which we send our students. That no longer is the case, but the state still requires us to have this warrant on the ballot. So we have students participating in CTE. We're just not paying for it here. It comes from the state directly to the CTE schools.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Could, then, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your card. Thank you very much. All those opposed? It looks like the ayes have it. Moving on to article number five. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for other instruction, the school committee and the town council recommend $1,352,257. Councilor Wolf, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to authorize $1,352,257 for other instruction.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Wonderful. The floor is open for discussion on Councilor Wolf's motion. Seeing none, would all those in favor of the motion please raise their card up? Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your card. Wonderful. The ayes have it for article five. Article six. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for student and staff support, the school committee and town council recommend $3,516,188. Councilor Casey, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the town vote to authorize $3,516,188 for student and staff support.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Wonderful. The floor is open for discussion. Seeing none, would all those in favor of Councilor Casey's motion please raise your card? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise a card. Wonderful. Article six has passed. Article seven. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for system administration, the school committee and the town council recommend $1,099,302. Councilor Abbott, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to authorize $1,099,302 for system administration.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Seeing none, would all those in favor of Councilor Abbott's motion please raise your card? Thank you very much. All those opposed? Wonderful. Councilor Abbott's motion is approved. Article eight. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for school administration, the school committee and the town council recommend $1,760,865. Councilor Craig, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to authorize $1,760,865 for school administration.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Seeing none, would all those in favor please raise your card? Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your card. The ayes have it. Councilor Craig's motion is approved. Article nine. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for transportation and buses, the school committee and the town council recommend $1,140,301. Councilor Bates, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that the town vote to authorize $1,140,301 for transportation and buses.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. The floor is open for discussion. Is there any discussion on the motion? There is none. All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your card. Seeing none, Councilor Bates's motion is approved, article nine. Now, article 10. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for facilities maintenance, the school committee and town council recommend $3,478,335. Council Orinstein, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the town vote to authorize $3,478,335 for facilities and maintenance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. The floor is open for discussion. Seeing none, would all those in favor of this motion please raise your card? Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your card. Seeing none. Council Orinstein's motion is approved. Article 11. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for debt service and other commitments, the school committee and town council recommend $2,503,255. Councilor Wolf, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to authorize $2,503,255 for debt service and other commitments.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Seeing none, would all those in favor of this motion please raise your card? Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise a card. Seeing none, Councilor Wolf's motion is approved. Article 12. To see what sum the town will vote to authorize for all other expenditures, the school committee and the town council recommend $65,000. Councilor Casey, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the town vote to authorize $65,000 for all other expenditures.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Is there anyone who has anything they'd like to say? Seeing none, would all those in favor of this motion please raise your card? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your card? Thank you. Seeing none, Councilor Casey's motion is approved. Article 13. To see what sum the town will authorize the school committee to expend for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, from the town's contribution to the total cost total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state-funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statutes Title 20-A, Section 15690, unexpected, unexpended balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of the schools. The town council and school committee recommend $39,278,131. Councilor Abbott, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve. Article 13 is written. I move that the town vote to approve article thirteen as written.
Do we have a second for Councilor Abbott's motion?
Second.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Is there any discussion? Thank you. No. Then, all those in favor of Councilor Abbott's motion, would you please raise your card? Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your card? Thank you. Councilor Abbott's motion has been approved. Article fourteen. To see what sum the town will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act. There's a recommend of twenty-two million five hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. And to see what sum the town will raise as the town's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act in accordance with the main revised statutes Title twenty-a, Section one-five-six-eight-eight. The recommendation for that is one, is fourteen million three hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred dollars. The town council and the school committee recommend approval of this article. Councilor Craig, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article fourteen as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. The floor is open for discussion on article fourteen. Seeing no discussion, would the people in favor of the motion please raise your cards? Thank you very much. Those opposed, would you raise your cards now? Thank you very much. The motion is approved. Article fifteen. To see what sum the town will raise and appropriate for the annual debt service payments on any non-state-funded school construction projects, non-state-funded portions of school construction projects, and minor capital projects, in addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the town's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve. The recommendation is two million five hundred and three thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. The town council and school committee recommend approval of this article. Councilor Bates, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article fifteen as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The floor is now open for discussion of this article. Seeing none, would all those in favor of the motion please raise your card? Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, would all those opposed to the motion please raise your card? Thank you very much. The motion is approved. Article sixteen. Article sixteen requires a written ballot, and it is required by law for action on this article. Here's the article. To see what sum the town will raise and appropriate in additional local funds, the recommend is thirteen million six hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and nine dollars, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services funding model by, and the recommend is thirteen million six hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and nine dollars, as required to fund the budget recommended by the school committee and the town council. So there is a required note that is required to be read. The note says, "The school committee recommends thirteen million six hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and nine dollars for the additional local funds, and gives the following reason for exceeding the state's essential programs and services model by thirteen million six hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and nine dollars." Thirteen million six hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and nine dollars is needed to cover the town's share of the school budget that the essential programs and services model does not recognize. The town council and the school committee recommend approval. Now, this article requires a written ballot, and the written ballot will be done down in the front by our town clerk, so that what's going to happen is everyone who wants to vote will come down and put in a written ballot into the box. They should have received a written ballot as they came in. So...
Motion.
Oh, sorry. Right, we need a motion. All right, so we do need a motion for this. Thank you very much. Council Orinsteine, is there a motion?
Yes, I move that the town vote by written ballot to approve article sixteen as recommended.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Now, the floor is open for discussion. Is there any discussion on this article? Wonderful. Thank you very much. Then, we will proceed to have the written ballots put in the box right down here, which will be supervised by the town clerk. All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you'd come back from the recess, and we will continue with the town meeting. I would like to provide you with the results that have been tabulated by the town clerk for article sixteen. There were one hundred and seventeen votes yes and twenty-one votes no, so that the yes votes carry the day, and article sixteen is passed. So we'll move on to article seventeen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate one million fifty thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and raise sixty-five thousand dollars as the local share, with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the school nutrition program. The town council and the school committee recommend approval. Councilor Wolf, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article sixteen as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Wonderful. The floor is open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the town folk of Yarmouth? Seeing none, would all those in favor of the motion please raise your card? Thank you very much. Would all those opposed now please raise your card? Seeing none, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Article eighteen. In the event that the Yarmouth School Department receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, shall the school committee be authorized and directed to use all of the additional state subsidy to decrease the local cost share expectation as defined in Title twenty-a, Section one-five-six-seven-one-a, Part one, Subpart B, for local property taxpayers for funding public education as approved by the school committee? The town council and school committee recommend approval. Councilor Casey, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the town vote to approve article eighteen as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on article eighteen and Councilor Casey's motion? Seeing none, would all those in favor please raise your card? Oh, I'm sorry. There is, so we will go back, there's discussion. Forgive me, I did not see that. Would you please go to a microphone? And would you state your name and just say that you are a town voter in the town of Yarmouth?
Sure, Tim Shannon, forty-seven West Elm Street, and yes, I'm a resident.
I'm sorry, it's voter, not resident.
And a voter.
Thank you.
A question about article eighteen. The effect of this is that if we get more state aid, the excess will be returned to the effect of lowering the tax rate. If we vote no on this article, the school committee or the school system would be permitted to keep the excess? Is that correct?
I am going to ask if there are any people at the table who would care to answer that question.
I can take that.
Dr. Dolof, the floor is yours.
That would appear to be the case, Mr. Shannon.
I'm supportive of the money staying with the schools if possible, so I would encourage others to vote no, so that the schools get the extra funding if the state aid comes in, just in an effort to support the schools. My thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did everyone hear that? Is there any further discussion of article eighteen and Councilor Casey's motion? Great. Would all those in favor of Councilor Casey's motion please raise your card in the air? Great. Would all those opposed please raise your card in the air? Could you hold your card in the air, please? Thank you very much. There are more ayes than nays, and so Councilor Casey's motion is approved. Article nineteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Yarmouth School Committee to expend such other sums as may be received from federal or state grants or programs or other sources during the 2024-25 fiscal year for school and/or adult education purposes, provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditure of funds not previously appropriated. The school committee estimates that five hundred and fifty thousand will be received and applied against the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. The town council and school committee recommend approval. Councilor Abbott, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article nineteen as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Now, the floor is open for discussion on Councilor Abbott's motion. Is there anyone who has some discussion? Seeing none, would all those in favor of Councilor Abbott's motion please raise your cards? Thank you very much. Would all those opposed please raise a card now? If you're opposed, please raise your card. Thank you. All right, then the motion passes. Councilor Abbott's motion is approved. Article twenty. To see if the town will vote to accept the categories of funds listed below as provided by the main state legislature. State revenue sharing, the estimated amount is one million seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Snowmobile reimbursements, the estimated amount is two hundred dollars. Department of Transportation block grant, the amount, estimated amount is seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars. Veterans tax refund, the amount is five thousand four hundred dollars. Court officers, one thousand two hundred dollars. Welfare, the estimated amount is fifty-four thousand six hundred dollars. State aid education, including federal pass-through funds, the amount is, estimated amount is eight million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Civil emergency preparedness funds, the estimated amount is one thousand dollars. Community development funds, the estimated amount is one thousand dollars. Main state housing authority grants, the estimated amount is one thousand dollars. Homestead exemption refunds, the estimated amount is six hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The town council and school committee recommend approval. Councilor Craig, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article twenty as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the floor for this motion? Seeing none, would all those who approve of the motion please raise your cards up? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise them? Thank you. Seeing none, the motion passes. Article twenty-one. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of seven million three hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred dollars of estimated transfers, fund balance, and revenues other than property taxes and school revenues, to reduce the amount to be raised by property taxes or take any action relative thereto. The town council recommends approval. Councilor Bates, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article twenty-one as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would all those in favor of the motion please raise your card? Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise your card now. Seeing none, the motion passes. Article twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four million three hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars for general government accounts or take any action relative thereto, the town council recommends approval. Councilor Orinsteine, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article twenty-two as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion from the town folk of Yarmouth? Seeing none, would all those in favor please raise your card? If you're in favor. Thank you. All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Article two, and the motion is passed. Article twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars for public safety accounts or take any action relative thereto, the town council recommends approval. Councilor Wolf, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article twenty-three as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the town? Seeing none, would all those in favor of the motion please raise their card? Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your card now? There are more approves than disapproves. The motion passes. Article twenty-four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three million eight hundred and six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for public works accounts or take any action relative thereto, the town council recommends approval. Councilor Casey, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the town vote to approve article twenty-four as written.
Great. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on Councilor Casey's motion from the floor? Seeing none, would all those in favor please raise your card? Thank you very much. Would you, anyone opposed to the motion, please raise your card now? Seeing none, the motion carries, and we move to article twenty-five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and two dollars for health and welfare or take any action relative thereto, the town council recommends approval. Councilor Abbott, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article twenty-five as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on this motion by Councilor Abbott? Seeing none, would all those in favor please raise their card? Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise their card now? Seeing none, the motion passes. Article twenty-six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two million two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars for public services or take any action relative thereto, the town council recommends approval. Councilor Craig, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article twenty-six as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Councilor Craig's motion, which was seconded? Seeing none, would all those in favor please raise your card? Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, please raise your card now? Seeing none, the motion passes. Article twenty-seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million four hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars for debt service or take any action relative thereto, the town council recommends approval. Councilor Bates, do you have a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve article twenty-seven as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Councilor Bates's motion? Seeing none, would all those in favor please raise your card? Thank you very much. All those opposed, please raise a card now? Thank you. The motion passes. Article twenty-eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two million five thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars for capital reserve accounts or take any action relative accounts or take any action relative thereto. The town council recommends approval. Counselor Ornestein?
I move that the town vote to approve Article twenty-eight as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, would all those in favor please raise your card? Thank you very much. Would all those opposed, raise your card now? Seeing none, the motion passes. Article twenty-nine. Oh, yeah, here we go. So, following action on Article twenty-eight, the town council recommends adjourning the annual town meeting to be continued on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three for voting by secret ballot on Articles twenty-nine through thirty-one, through thirty, through thirty of the warrant. Polls will be open at the Yarmouth High School Gymnasium off West Elm Street in Yarmouth from six a.m. until eight p.m. That's right. Let me reread that to make sure it's correct. Following action on Article twenty-eight, the town council recommends adjourning the annual meeting to be continued on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four for voting by secret ballot on Articles twenty-nine through thirty. Polls will be open at Yarmouth High School Gymnasium off West Elm Street in Yarmouth from six a.m. until eight p.m. Let me reemphasize that it's June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Great. Counselor Craig, do you have a motion to adjourn the annual meeting to be continued on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four for voting by secret ballot on Articles twenty-nine through thirty?
I move that we adjourn the annual town meeting and continue on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four by voting by secret ballot.
Thank you very much, and we have a second for that. Great. Is there any discussion or question from the town people of Yarmouth about this action, this motion? Great. So all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your hand now. Thank you very much. The motion passes. Before we finish, there's one final thing that I would like to do. We recognize a number of townspeople earlier in the evening, and I would like to take a moment to recognize some of the people who serve all of us. Mr. LaFlem, would you like to introduce the town staff?
Of course. Thank you, Jay, and great job. Again, I'll begin by introducing members of the Yarmouth Town Council who have been really wonderful supports through the transition of my new position and again, work daily to improve the lives of folks here in town. To my right, to your left, Counselor Zoe Wolf, who is finishing up or who is in the middle of her first. That's right. Thank you. Of her first term. Counselor Megan Casey, who is serving, I believe, her second term? First term? Her first term as well. Counselor Karen Ornestein, who is in her first term. Counselor Heather Abbott, who is sort of in between terms but finishing up her second term and will be up for reelection next Tuesday. Counselor Randall Bates, who is in his fortieth term. And Counselor David Craig, who's the chair of this year's town council, who is finishing up his third term and will be up for reelection next Tuesday as well. Unfortunately, Counselor Michelle Cremarti is unable to join us tonight, and she is in her second term. I also want to take this as an opportunity and glad that folks have stuck around for this to recognize members of the town staff who are honestly the best in the business and are just a pleasure to work with on a day-to-day basis. We have several department heads and other support staff here tonight. Lisa Grant, of course, our town clerk, who does a masterful job of keeping all of our herding all the cats in the town office. Don Madden, our finance director. Jessica Factor, our new human resources director. Steve Johnson, town engineer and stormwater aficionado. Eric Streed, who's our public works director. Aaron Swirko, our planning and development director. Nick Chrimbley, who's our code enforcement officer. Dan Gallant, our police chief, who's looking very snazzy today. Mike Robitaille, who's in his paramilitary uniform here, our fire chief. Heidi Grimm, our library director. Karen McNeil, our director of Yarmouth Community Services and everything else. Sean Quirk, who is running the boards, running all the cameras, and has pulled us all together. He and his team do just an unbelievable job and is the reason why you can all watch the town council meetings at home. Leo Nider, who I thought might be here, who's helping us out with communications. There's various other folks. Bill Goddard, Olivia Homer. There's lots of folks here today, which is great. It's really our pleasure to work for you all, and again, I just can't say enough about this group. So with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and if those folks in the back, so I can embarrass them, the folks who are town staff, if you could just stand up and be recognized, that'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. LaFlem. Dr. Dolof, would you like to present the school board members?
I'll quickly introduce members of the school committee. To my far left, Christina Patrick is finishing up her first year. Jessica Rue, finishing up her fifth year. You've already heard from both Newell Auger and Kate Shub, who are finishing up six years. Jeremy Fisher isn't here this evening. He's finishing up his first term. Michael Wilber, finishing up his fourth year as vice chair. David Ray, I think he's probably the only person at the table who has Counselor Bates beat for years of service. Our current chair, and finishing up, I'm not sure, seventeen or eighteen years in total over the past few decades. I too would like to recognize members of the school staff who are here. You have the finest school department in the state of Maine because of these people, and so I'd like to ask members of our school staff that are here this evening to stand and be recognized. To stand and be recognized.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dolof, and thank you to all of you for attending this town meeting tonight. Again, you're part of over a hundred and seventy years of history, and I congratulate you and thank you for participating in it. Our meeting is adjourned until June eleventh.